How many nameless hotels? So many heart-breaking tales. What a terrible call to be one of the lost. How many forgotten names? So many two-handed games. It's part of the call when you're one of the lost. It's a room in the night that you use and then leave with the key. All the marks left behind of a searching who so can't despair. How many memories so clear? So many shrouded in fear. I have paid the cost and been one of the lost. Willie May, Willie May, me your everything. Willie May, Willie May, your everything. You're the sunshine on my cloudy day. Willie May, Willie May, your skin so smooth and brown. Willie May, Willie May, your skin so smooth and brown. Nothing square, everything is round. Come to me, Willie May, I never treat you bad. Come to me, Willie May, I never treat you bad. You're the best this boy's ever had. It's raining down in Georgia, calling to the sea. The heat down in Texas fans the misery, baby. Don't do me this way. It's the same old drag, day after day. Nothing ever changed without you only treating me bad. You're the meanest woman I believe I ever had, baby. Don't do me this way. It's the same old drag, day after day. You told me that you loved me, you're lying with a sin. While I was running off to work, some other man walked in, baby. Don't do me this way. It's the same old drag, day after day. My baby say something gotta change. I can't go on this way. I said, "Baby, please, 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 please." Is there nothing I can say? If you want me to, here's what I do. I'll be a fool for you. I won't stay out at night. I won't buzz at night. I'll change my ways from wrong to right. Don't make me beg, don't make me beg. Stay with me one more night. If you want me to, here's what I do. I'll be a fool for you. Now you've heard my plea and you're telling me That still you're gonna leave. I said, "Baby, please, can't you see?" I'm down on bended knee. And if you want me to, here's what I do. I'll be a fool for you. Don't worry about me, I'm doing just fine. I won't worry about you, no, I won't waste my time. I have found out myself, crying don't help. Don't bother to phone, won't be nobody home. Don't bother to call, or trouble yourself at all. I have tried it myself, I know crying don't help. I feel so much better and I'm doing alright. Putting things together and I'm sleeping at night. I'm feeling a ten years younger and talking real plain. Starting to wake up and get a hold on this thing. I had a whole lot of money, brought by myself, I know. How long it was over, I refused to let you go. I found out myself, and crying don't help. No crying don't help. Begging and pleading, scratching and clawing. No crying don't help. Crying don't help. No crying don't help. Every night, I play with my To give me all that I desire. I know the blues and friends I choose have all been bad news. I'll not freeze or criticize For things I do. I'll pay the price. I found the blues and friends I choose are always bad news. At the end of the day, I lie awake and softly pray That the blues and friends I choose will not be bad news. You're taking money from my paycheck When I'm barely getting by. The rich keep getting richer. They got the whole damn pie.
Now wait a minute!
I think there's something wrong When the city runs the country and the country runs the home. People's tired of paying While someone else is playing. They've been too busy talking To hear what we've been saying.
Now wait a minute!
This has gone on too long. We'd better call a special session to defeat the cost of living. You better bundle up forever. The cold will make you shudder. Our natural winter's coming. Followed by the summer.
Now wait a minute!
We need to right this wrong. We want back the country and we want back the home. Yes, and we want back the country and we want back the home.
Give it back.
There's a bad one coming down Got no friends left in town Got no place to hang around There's a bad one coming down There's a cold wind blowing through There ain't nothing left to do Lot but sit and play the blues There's a cold wind blowing through Bad luck and trouble Ought to be my middle name Well, bad luck and trouble Ought to be my middle name When it all comes down Love is a load down crying shame There's a hole in my soul Got no one place to go I would come in from the cold But there's a hole in my soul Well, bad luck and trouble Ought to be my middle name Yes, bad luck and trouble Ought to be my middle name Oh, when it all comes down Love is a load down crying shame Hungry, angry, lonely and tired Hungry, angry, lonely and tired I've been told these are luxuries I can't afford This life is killing me It's not at all what I thought it'd be I get jumpy and I wanna run I can't stand it underneath a gun, you know that Hungry, angry, lonely and tired Hungry, angry, lonely and tired I've been told these are luxuries I can't afford I wanna know what it's all about That makes people wanna jump and shout Only know one thing for sure Something keeps 'em coming back no more They get hungry, angry, lonely and tired Hungry, angry, lonely and tired I've been told these are luxuries I can't afford Let's go! At the bottom there's a lot of souls Finding out about self-control When they finally lost everything That's when they've got the whole world again Remember Hungry, angry, lonely and tired Hungry, angry, lonely and tired Well, I've been told these are luxuries I can't afford You got to rock before you roll You got to walk before you stroll You got to live before you learn You got to kill before you earn, uh-huh You got to rock Yeah, you got to rock Uh-huh, you got to rock Well, you got to rock You know the moon comes out at night Sun shines in the day The river keeps on rolling On its weary way, yes You got to rock Well You got to rock Uh-huh, you got to rock Whoa, you got to rock All mankind got dreams That's what we're all after You can't get there from here If you got to serve to master's lord You got to rock Uh-huh, you got to rock Well, you got to rock Whoa, you got to rock You got to rock Uh-huh, you got to rock Whoa, you got to rock All got children got to rock You got to rock One of these days I'm gonna wait But I'll be back One of these days 'Cause I miss Your kiss, baby, always I'll say goodbye Then I'll be gone But I'll return It won't be long 'Cause I miss Your kiss, baby, always So honey, take my hand, baby, walk with me I'll be home darling soon you'll see Wipe that worried look off your face Just be sure that you save my place I'll be back Hickory-clack Like a railroad train Follow the track 'Cause I miss Your kiss, baby, always So honey, take my hand, baby, walk with me I'll be home darling soon you'll see Wipe that worried look off your face Just be sure that you save my place I'll be back Hickory-clack Like a railroad train Follows the track 'Cause I miss Your kiss, baby, always 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 Always